Just be sure to include things you identify with that resonate to you and that you love and care about. Therefore, the words can be adjectives, nouns, they can be people, and they can even be places. So with that being said, are there any questions before I begin the three-minute timer? All right, so I'm going to go ahead and begin, and you can go ahead and start writing your phrases for three minutes. Okay, go ahead and start bringing your writing to a close. And our next step for you is to read back through your list, and we want you to star the phrases that you feel are most important to you. So read through your list and place a star next to those phrases you feel are really important to you. And then go ahead, if you will, share some of those starred phrases in the chat box with our group. So go ahead and take a moment to do that. Wonderful, and start reading the posts from others in our group. Good, happy, passionate, courageous, love it. A mom, a wife. Keep them coming, I see more people typing. Love that, Mary. Wonderful. Good, well, go ahead and feel free to keep adding them to the chat. We always like to start our time off with a social emotional check-in, just to get to know each other a little bit more. And these activities that we do align to the CASL competencies. And this one mostly aligns with self-awareness, but also is about building relationship skills because we're sharing with each other different parts of our lives that are really important to us. So again, as a reminder, the South Carolina Department of Education has embraced the CASL model for the integration of SDL in South Carolina schools. And we have the website posted here, and this website is full of resources, research, and guidance for educators and for school communities. And as another reminder, we're your facilitators for this book study, so please feel free to reach out to us at any time if you have questions regarding the implementation of MTSS in your school or district. Okay, so in preparation for our discussion today, please have available your MTSS book, a writing utensil, a notebook or paper, and post-it notes if you have those available. You should have read chapter six prior to our session and created a mind map of the information presented within the chapter. You will also want to have the digital agenda open so you can access all the needed links and resources for today's book talk session. And then, of course, as a reminder, please mute your microphone when not speaking, feel free to use the chat function to add to throughout the book study talk, and if comfortable, we would love for you to turn your cameras on.
I want to thank you again for attending to our norms for our virtual meeting, and the last time we met, you were all so engaged, and we had some amazing conversations, so I'm looking forward to another great session. So in chapter six, we were learning about integrating district support teams. I want you to take a minute to think about your district, whether you're in a district position or if you're in a school within the district, but you're falling under those district supports. And think about what systems, strategies, or resources are in place in your district within each of the MTSS implementation drivers that we read about. We're going to use a protocol called the back channel to record your ideas. And in your digital handout, you'll find a link to the back channel. Now, a back channel is just the practice of using technology features to maintain like real-time online conversations alongside the primary group. Often this happens in tandem, we're just going to take it and do it briefly. It allows professionals to continue the conversation beyond just the presentation or whatever professional learning activity you're participating in. And it's a place to record ideas and thoughts, so you can refer back to it beyond the live session. So when you click in the back channel link, record your ideas to this question. What systems, strategies, and/or resources are in place in your district within each of the MTSS implementation drivers? You'll also notice that the document is going to be broken down under the different types of districts, like large districts or smaller districts. And so be sure that you're recording your ideas under the right ones so that people that are in similar situations can come back and look for your ideas under those. You also noted that notice that the document's broken down under the three drivers that we read about on page 207 to 214. So the leadership driver, the contextual driver, and the competency driver. So try to think through each of those drivers and how your district attends to them. You'll have five minutes to record any ideas that you have and review the other participants' ideas as well. And be sure to take notice of the ones that you're interested in or that you'd like to take back and share with your district. So go ahead and head on over to the back channel document. And you'll have about five minutes, I'm going to hop over there as well and throw it up on the screen. But be sure that you're taking the next five minutes to record your ideas and review others. All right, here we go. All right, everyone, if we can come on back. And let's take a second to share out, what are some things that stood out to you on the back channel? Or is there anything that was listed on there that you would like more information about that we can gather from the group? Anyone want to be brave? All right, well, it looks like we'll just continue on then. Definitely be sure that you refer back to this document. So if your district is just developing their processes for leading MTSS, this might be a nice resource to refer back to. All right, so now we're going to get ready to go into breakout rooms. And ladies, before we do that, I know we have a small group today. So how do we want to just maintain in this large group and share, or do you want to still break into two?
Audrey, it looks like we have two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, about 15, so at least maybe break into two rooms.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so for today, for our readings, we asked that you create a mind map to record your big ideas and thoughts that you took away from this chapter. I know for myself, as I went back and created mine today, it really helped me key into some of the big ideas within the chapter. So I'm glad that I did it, but if not, we can still be sure that, you know, just share your thinking. So if you didn't create one, don't worry. When you go into your room, if you did, if you wouldn't mind sharing your mind map with everyone, then describe it and how you organized the information, and then explain how you connected ideas and any big thinking that came out of it, or any questions that you may have developed as you were creating it. You'll have about 20 minutes to discuss in your group, so be sure that whoever you choose as your facilitator and timekeeper, be sure everyone has an opportunity to share, and that the group has also opportunities to respond to one another's ideas and thinking. All right, so just like in the past, there is the sign up for the different breakout rooms. You can head on over through the digital handout link and go ahead and sign up for a room, and then click on the link below to get it started. Again, you'll be sharing your mind map, describing it, and then explaining how you connected ideas.
Audrey, are they coming back at about 4:12?
Yes, 4:12, sorry. I didn't do my job, I didn't read through at all.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Okay Audrey, our room number one is just coming back. Perfect. Maybe just give them 30 seconds or so to jump back in here. Once you're back in, if you wouldn't mind turning your camera on just for a second so we can be sure you're here.
I think Allison and Mary, they started to have a little bit of um techie glitches at the end of our group, so.
Um yeah, it looks like Audrey, we have 12 people back. So we should have most everyone. Alright.
Alright, if we could um get someone to share what were some of your highlights, some of the takeaways from your discussion? You could unmute and please feel free to share three highlights or one of your highlights.
Um we agree, we're talking about the knot on page 203. How everything is woven together and if one string is broken, the we, the knot is very weak.
Communication and collaboration. Alright, someone else?
And I like that thinking about, yeah, if you break one, it's definitely going to be weaker than if you had them all together.
And that the vision should include all stakeholders, like the community, members of the community as well as the faculty, staff, and students.
Yeah, that was interesting. Our group, a lot of, for our mind maps, vision was the center point of the mind map. And we worked out from the vision as being the most important piece.
Alright, someone else?
I'm going to piggyback on that vision, even though we really didn't talk about that in our group, we did. But that, that's the whole thing. If everybody doesn't know what it is and why, the, you know, all of that, that's where those knots get torn apart. Because we're not committed, because we don't really understand why we're doing it. We're doing stuff, but we don't really know why we're doing it. Or we're avoiding it, like we talked about, some meetings keep getting canceled, always an excuse. And um districts have to really embrace it before schools are going to embrace it. And I think I've been going in backwards because I'm doing it with schools and I really haven't gone to the district part. So I'm gonna have to, I'm not gonna stop with the schools, but I'm going to figure out a way to see what I can do with the district piece.
Thanks for sharing Jennifer.
Alright, two connections. Any kind of connection that you made while thinking about this support system? And Jennifer, really you just had a connection as well with yours.
I did, I was gonna say, I just did one.
And I can connect with you Jennifer, because you know, I shared also, that's where I'm sitting. Working with schools before knowing, you know, that they're still developing a district plan. So um I'm glad about the work that we're doing with the district plan. A little bit later, we'll talk about, share a little bit about the district capacity assessment. But that's been beneficial to a few districts to help them think through, okay, where are we in implementation? And specific to these drivers and so um kind of spurred them to go, okay, we can do some things.
And that makes me connect to the word assume, you know, I assumed too much and you know what assume, if you take it apart. So uh I'm gonna put assuming and have some conversation.
Alright, anyone you have a question? Is there someone who has a question? Something else that you're thinking?
I have a question. I would love for anyone who is in this study right now, who works at the district level with MTSS, if you could use like the little raise your hand feature? Because I'm wondering how many district people we have today.
Do you see any hands, Audrey?
I don't. I think Mr. Caller is one, um, yes.
I used to be, I apologize. I came back to the good side, so I'm back in the building. I used to be at the district level.
Oh.
It was a little too dark for me, so I had to come back into the light and actually affect children. It was a little too dark for me, so I had to come back into the light and actually affect children's outcomes. Boots on the ground.
So then my question is, for everyone else that's in here, like, how do you envision sharing what you're learning with people in district roles? So that, because we know that district leadership is so important, um, what are your thoughts on that?
That was actually my question too, so I don't have the answer for you, as to how to approach that, as far as with district, you know, schools trying to communicate this to the district, what would be a good starting point? So, I don't have an answer, but I'm willing to listen if anyone else does.
Anyone have any thoughts?
I mean, I could definitely allow just a little bit of insight in regards to, you know, it depends on the size of the district, I think in our group, in our breakout session, we were discussing, uh, two of the ladies worked in the same building, and one made a comment about how they have a very um, active or engaged assistant principal that comes in the meetings and allows them to, um, you know, how your district functions as far as the size goes, but they said their assistant principal comes in and does all that stuff, but, you know, I would kind of find out who in the district would be responsible for your MTSS? And they may not, they may not know that, when you reach out to them, that might be something new to them. And that's also a breakdown, a part of that breakdown at the district level is assigning individual roles and not hiring for specific purposes, because I think it takes a very special person. As you guys know, because you're trying to roll it out in your buildings, or at least see how it functions and guide that process, but for me, it was always, I was different, I enjoyed it, so. It would just be inviting me to those meetings, so I can see if there is a situation where I can help. Like where your roadblocks are, where my voice might be different to your principal, or to the funding sources attached to, or something like that, where not necessarily, I wouldn't want to come in and really go and dig into an actual students intervention team meeting. But in an intervention team meeting of planning, those kind of things, I would absolutely want to be a part of that, so I can see where your team's at. And then I would function the same way we would want to see our kids, I would differentiate between different building levels and the capacity in each building. How my support would be enacted. Uh, some were a lot of hands off, because they kind of had it flying, and that's fine, but again, I was there as more of a sounding board for resources or scheduling or something like that. Uh, that was me though, and I can assure you that I'm not really common across the state of South Carolina. Um, but it was just the invitation, and then you'll kind of see, too, that that's kind of an artifact for you to go to your principal and say, listen, we've been reaching out to district leadership, not to throw them under the bus, but we've invited them to 16 meetings and they've showed up to none. That kind of, that's an indication right there of how supportive they may be of you, and again, they're busy. Uh, but that is a part of their position, and so they should make time to support those local efforts in your building level and provide those insights and the resources that could be available. I know there's, there is some timeframes in regards to federal programming and grants that have been extended, so you may have some money out there laying around that should be spent or needs to be spent, and you might not know that. And so they could offer some perspective in regards to money you didn't necessarily know existed.
And I just want to kind of add on to what Mr. Caller was saying, I'm not sure, it kicked me out for a few minutes when he started to talk. And me and Mary were the two that he was referencing, and we, um, between me and Mary, we kind of talked to our district people all the time, my literacy supervisor who I report to, and she talks to the, our new MTSS coordinator all the time, so we're, we have been in constant communication about some of the things we've been learning in the book study with our district people all the time, and then I know that our MTSS district coordinator does pop into our meetings frequently across the district, so that we're all kind of trying to get on the same page.
Thank you for sharing, it sounds like, you know, making that first step to like activate this like support and feedback loop that you can have between district and school. Um, and making that first step in inviting, just simply inviting to um, those who might be overseeing MTSS at the district level.
Alright, so that is a great segue into the district implementation with the district capacity assessment. And district implementation teams need to know how well their system of support can help schools implement MTSS and determine if the system is sustainable. So the district capacity assessment, which is also known as DCA, is an action assessment designed to help educational district leaders and staff better align resources with intended outcomes and help develop action plans to support the use of effective innovations. So this is a tool that you could definitely pass down to your district, and they could definitely use this to evaluate their system. This is a visual of the drivers that you see on page 206. And the MTSS implementation drivers demonstrate the importance of using the lens of technical and adaptive problem solving. It is likely that as the district evolves throughout the MTSS implementation process, that district teams will need to adapt how the drivers are put into place to meet the needs and challenges. So this is also a place that you may want to visit with your district. On page 214 of our book, it discusses how districts can assess the status of implementing these drivers through the use of the district capacity assessment, or DCA. It allows district teams to assess the need for capacity building at the district level, assessing the effects of capacity development efforts, and helps district identify next steps. So you can find these resources for implementing the DCA in a link on your digital handout. And previously, we reviewed the video from the lens of the school's leadership team, so this is, you may want to go through it and look at it again, but also, again, invite a member from your district leadership team to watch it with you as well, and just take a moment to just think about after our discussion and going into your groups, what is it that you really need from your district, what support do you need, and having a conversation with your leadership team about that, what do you need from them, and then watching this video.
Okay, so it's that time again where we want to reflect on the what, and the so what about the information presented in chapter six? And of course, these discussions that we've had throughout this session. So let's also think about the now what, now what will you do in response to today's book study and the information we've talked about? Uh, meaning what actionable steps can you take to enhance MTSS at your school or at the district? So at this time, take out those three post-it notes, or again, draw three boxes on a piece of paper near you. And for each box or post-it note, write one actionable step. And decide which step that you might want to do first. And then of course, once you're done writing your three steps, please share maybe one or a few of those actionable steps in the chat box. So go ahead and take a few minutes now to do this. Good, we have some coming in here now, really looking at the DCA and sharing that with district personnel. Digging deeper into what the district's vision truly is for MTSS program. Oh, many new members are redoing the SAM. Yes. Yeah, feedback loops, right, with their MTSS plans in the district. Great. Okay, so keep typing in your actionable steps into the chat, don't feel like you have to stop, we're just going to go over some reminders uh, for our next session. Our next book study session is on Wednesday, February 10th, so this is the one that we had to change from a Thursday to a Wednesday. And we'll be reading chapter seven, and using the sentence, phrase, word protocol to guide our breakout room discussions. And in a few minutes, I'll provide you a preview to this protocol. And as a reminder, you could review domain number one of the SAM tool, and check out that DCA or the district capacity assessment linked on the digital agenda. We would also like to remind you that we have additional opportunity if you want to join us on Voxer. And I'll go ahead and give you a preview now into that protocol. So as you're reading chapter seven, to prepare for our next session, use the sentence, phrase, word protocol, which is commonly referred to as a text rendering experience. And we also have this linked on your digital agenda, so don't feel like you have to memorize it at this point. The directions are pretty simple though, as you're reading chapter seven, find a sentence or sentences you feel are particularly significant to the chapter. Also find a few phrases, a phrase or a few phrases that you feel have significance as well. And then lastly, find some words within the chapter that stand out to you as significant. So when we meet on February 10th to discuss chapter seven, we will use this sentence, phrase, word protocol to guide our breakout room discussions. So it will look like three kind of rounds in your breakout room, where everyone will share their sentences first, and in the second round, everyone will share their phrases, and in the last round, everyone will share their significant words. So again, you can find a copy to this protocol on your digital agenda to review between now and then.
As we have in the past, we ask that you ensure that you take some time to um, fill out the exit ticket or feedback survey that we have, it is linked in the digital agenda, where you can scan or go to this bitly address, but again, it gives us feedback, and it also provides a way to mark your attendance for the session. And Ricky has already shared that our next meeting is on Wednesday, February 10th, because of the Leaders Making Readers Symposium on the 11th. So just be sure that you change your schedule, because we will be meeting that day, and we really appreciate you being flexible with your calendars in that way. So thanks so much for joining us again, we only have two sessions after today, I know this is a really heavy and complex book, but um, it's been very beneficial to be able to talk through with others throughout the state and hear your ideas, so I hope you're enjoying it and being able to take something out of it, and we thank you for being here.
Um, is it alright, because we have the phonics book study the same day?
Oh no.
Yeah, it starts at three to four, I think it is. Can I just come in at four when that meeting's over?
Yes.
Yes, and we'll record too, we're sorry for that overlap, and then we'll record the session as well, so that way you can see what you missed too.
Okay, so if I'm not there at 3:30, I'm in that one, and then I'll just switch over at four.
Okay.
Okay, wow, thanks Valerie. We'll change the date, we hadn't started yet, and so I didn't know if we will have any overlapping people, so thank you for saying that Valerie. You'll be with me first.
Yeah.
Okay, problem. Thank you.
I meant to mention after, when we were talking about ways to support districts, also just offer them the opportunity to do the book study again when we hold it again.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Audrey, are you still recording?
I am, let me stop.
Yes, I'm hoping